We will call to meeting the July twenty seven, twenty twenty one meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stainis and myself. County Supervisors, we have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck and Luann Goki, our Administrative Assistant. And our first appointment as usual is David Drier, Jackson County Engineer.
Good morning. First item on the agenda is the Rural County Transportation Program Funding Agreement for the City of Bellevue. This is our agreement for that program for this year. It's a twenty five thousand dollar grant to the City of Bellevue to do some asphalt milling work on Franklin Street, some sidewalk repair and some storm sort of repair. And so we would recommend.
No move. Second, then moved and seconded to approve the Rural County Transportation Project for Bellevue. Any further discussion? I think some of that sidewalk project was ADA applied.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carried.
And the next item on the agenda is a right away utility permit for Black Hills Energy and Perry Township. Section twenty three, replace some high pressure gas line. It's just outside the city of Andrew. So we'd recommend approval of that.
Motion to approve. Second, motion and second to approve the right away utility permit for Black Hills Energy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Motion carried.
And then the final item on our agenda is the approval of Mr. Todd Driscoll for our motor greater one position. We're called, we interviewed twenty two people. Our twenty two applicants applied. We interviewed four. He was the highest scoring applicant. Comes well qualified with heavy equipment experience and some work supervising in local quarry. So we'd recommend that he be appointed. The offer, the position was offered to Todd. He accepted. And so we're looking for him to start in early August.
And did we look into a training program or anything?
I haven't yet. We've sent the operators to Ames for training the string. And those are the types of things that we can do for him. I haven't checked with.
Is that hands on type center?
No, they have to send them up to one of those heavy equipment companies. I've noticed one in Minnesota that has a but it was hands on training.
Actually uses some machines.
Yeah. I mean, he's going to be operating with the one of the more qualified operators in the vehicle. We'll see how, how it goes. He may pick it up real quick.
I know. I've just been asked that about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've, I mean, we've had the simulator come in once. I don't know how many years ago, but we haven't done that since. But we did send him off to Ames for some.
I mean, you know how it goes. I'll get one call says that I was talking to the gentleman the other day. The last guy, he was just the worst operator he ever had. I talked to the next case. Gee, that's a nice job. Oh, yeah. Everybody has their own opinion.
I would move to approve to on the hiring of that individual.
Then moved and seconded to approve the hiring of Todd Driscoll as the motor greater operator one. All those in favor? Hi. Hi. Motion carried.
That's all I have. We'll have our work session later this morning on some additional projects we'd like to report with.
Okay, um, I stopped up at one hundred eighty. Look. Looks really good.
The Colbert?
Yeah.
Yep, they're going to seed today.
I see all the rocks in place and apparently they run into a lot of rocks.
Well, they did.
Oh, my God.
They were, they were pounding on some basically bedrock. They had to bring in the hammers to break it out. They couldn't do it with the excavators, but they got it in.
Yeah, looks good. They kind of straightened that out a little bit maybe too there.
Yeah, they changed the line to tad to get it through there. It's not, in my opinion, as aesthetically pleasing as the old, you know, stone bridge that was there. That was, that was pretty nice work for a hundred plus year old. Yeah. Bridge. It's something we should have done. So.
Well, actually, I know this has maybe started long before you got here, but any updates on the South Main Bridge down here? Do we know where we're standing, where we're at with that?
That's not, I don't have any information since the last time we spoke with the city. I, they're the lead on the project. They should be well on with their plans. But that was something too that I was planning on checking on with Frank to see where it's at.
Because I get asked that all the time. Yeah. I mean, we haven't talked about it for a long time. So I was just like, I know they don't have the administrator and I don't know where they're at the process and that. But, uh, you know, it's kind of tough for them to be or bottom body down or at least.
We'll get an update for you.
That'd be great. And any updates on the hundred and eighty?
Hundred eighty eighth street, mile, little, vital creep. That's going in, that's going to stand, it's going to start in August, end of August. He's just that.
That should be done before.
Yes, he expects that he will have it done within the timeline.
I see there are a few more lost. I saw one up that way yesterday. There are two more. Yeah, that's a big project up there.
And the four hundredth street, I can't recall.
Four seventy fifth.
The one way north there. That bridge there, that table has, they're starting it.
That's why as well. That's, it's when?
They're underway now.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
I didn't notice that.
And they're getting, they're starting to do some grading, I guess, and then they'll pull that bridge. And the crack ceiling and joint repair is proceeding. And so.
Okay, so I got a question about that. So we were, we were asked about where I would come back from Monticello last night and I can't remember which road I was on, but I, I tell it was freshly cracked sealed over that way. In Jackson County? I come, I think I was in Jackson County. So I come back to, come back through Bernard. No.
When I went up on the K's Road.
I come back, I come back to K's Road. It's a K Road, K, crack ceiling on some of that. I don't think so. But I will check with Mike. Then I caught across one fifty at Byron Hill. And did Andrew, not Andrew Blacktop either, the commander too. Sixty one. One of them looked kind of great. Anyway, we were, we were asked about sealing blacktop. Now, I noticed they don't really seal blacktop. They just fill the cracks. So this is more in a parking lot also. So I didn't know if there was something that can enlighten us.
There's a chip seal and fox seals and things that you can put on asphalt, which helps it to maintain its flexibility.
Thanks.
The crack ceiling is set to.
I mean, I was told for water penetration. Installers or installation people that you don't, you don't do that. You don't cover the whole thing. You kind of seal things up. Kind of seal the cracks. I don't know.
Or you can, you can chip seal there. You know, they'll see that largely on some of the more local residential streets. They will put down asphalt emulsion and then put down, you know, chip seals.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And.
We lived on a gravel road before. But no, I just wondered. It was in one of our, one of our built, our building parking lots and I have, I don't know that for sure.
It just helps maintain the flexibility and like seals some smaller airline cracks.
Okay. All right. Stay there till you're ten. We'll be here. I'll try not to fall down.
Okay, this time we'll be joined by Becky Chapin and Mim Legel from the Health Board. And how's the knee doing?
Every day is a little bit better.
That's good. Good morning.
Hi. So we are here today because the Board of Health has concluded their interviews for the open vacancy we have for the health administrator position. They found a great candidate. She's got a master's in public administration, a bachelor's in health and wellness. She's certified through the National Incident Management System through FEMA. She has extensive knowledge in grant writing and administration. The only problem the Board of Health is seeing is the possibility of a budget shortfall depending on insurance that a new employee would need. There was a single plan budgeted for our health administrator. If a family plan would be picked up, that would cause a budget shortfall of approximately fourteen thousand dollars in their current budget without knowing if the budget would be on target, you know, with the new health administrator extending it for the rest of the fiscal year. They're still negotiating salary. They would have to negotiate that as well if they were to go above what our current health administrator made. That may cost in addition a couple thousand dollars. So I looked at their budget and I kind of talked to Mim and Pam about it and they're thinking it's going to be in the range of fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars that they could have a shortfall of. It could be less depending on other expenses within the budget. So in order for them to be able to make an offer to this candidate, they would kind of need to have this board on board with allocating additional funds if they get to that point in their budget. So that was kind of the conversation.
Was there any carryover from last year?
There was nineteen thousand dollars carryover from last year. This count, this year's fiscal year budget is about eight thousand less than was budgeted last year when you don't consider the grant funding that's in there. So two years ago, there was six thousand dollars carryover in the budget. So that would be more in line with what you would possibly see this year. So there's just some variables there that we don't know. Only a month into the budget and we'll be under the administrator. So.
So it's possible you might have enough to cover about half with carryover.
Yeah, we just don't know.
And that's a guess. Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
So will she be doing the per testing stuff? There any, I mean, Frank used to do that as a service for the septic systems. And then when Kimberly had on, she had, had you had to hire someone, which was two or three thousand dollars to do it.
She would do soil borings that were more in line with standards, I think. So. Yeah, as I understand this individual does water testing too.
Mm hmm. As in the past.
And, and she said that she was willing, she went out with the field people she worked with now to do that, but she didn't actually do it herself. But she sounded willing to learn how to do it.
Well, I think she's done it in the past. She just hasn't done it recently.
Okay, her most recent position was overseeing environmental health specialists that were in the field. So for the, for the past six years and so she was mainly overseeing the administration of the department, but she routinely did go in the field with them. So I think she would probably need, there's plenty of resources out there. I've already talked to DNR Department of Public Health. They've got liaisons that they hope calm them up with for field training if they need it. She would have to be accredited with her registered environmental health specialist degree within a year. And she's willing to do that. She's put some of her current employees through that same program training. I did look a little bit about the NIM's training certification that she sat through FEMA and that looks, I mean, it's something that Lynn Meetinger would have. But she'd be an immediate resource to emergency responses here as well. I think they could kind of coordinate. I think there's definitely ability in her to bring new revenue into the department. Like the protesting, bring some of those things back depending on her style of administration. Yeah.
The Health Board met with her and then the next morning Becky and I and Mim met with her over the phone. And I was very impressed with her. Lots and lots and lots of quality there.
Yes, they just don't want to have an issue if there's a budget shortfall making the offer now. So.
Well, you know, I would say that I'm sure this board would amend the budget if she accepted, accepts the position. And that we can determine as we get through the year, right? We don't have to do that immediately.
Correct.
We would just see when, when the shortfall starts and make a request at that point in time. I don't see any reason that the board wouldn't support that. We want, we want a qualified person and she certainly does meet our needs and be, and exceeds the needs, I think. So I think it's a win-win for the county.
We can get her in here and get her going and we're not paying the outside agency.
Right, right, extra.
And I don't work.
Well, we still would like to have the opportunity to have the gentleman from Quicken County work with her.
Yes.
Yes. And they said he was willing to do that. So.
Yeah.
So there's really no action needed at this point.
No. It's just a commitment that we will, we will do what we need to do.
The Board of Health is going to meet tomorrow night to finalize what offer they're going to make and then hopefully.
And she did say she would be available almost immediately.
Yes. We're thinking if she were to accept August ninth, by the time we did the background and the unemployment stuff would be a feasible start date.
Certainly. Thank you for our support. We need to keep an open line of communication going forward.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was basically it. Just wanted to.
And, and on this, not that same subject, but yesterday when I was here, I did go and talk to Christina. Because we were talking about if we were going to possibly look at some type of assistant for those two individuals and she put together a list of things that assistant might do for her. And so we can look at that and we can, we can make some decisions down the road as to whether we think that's feasible or not.
Yeah, and I did talk to Christina about that. And a lot of the things that she put on the list would be mirrored in the Health Department. They have basically have the same actual process, applications and fees. And so it'd be very well aligned to share sports data about.
So that's something we will discuss as we move forward.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
All right. And I did look and there would be room for three of them in there. It might be a little cramped.
And I talked to her a little bit about how they used to have the desks arranged. They kind of changed things up a little bit with that big table. That's not necessary. She didn't feel that be in there. I don't, I think they used it with their summer intern and their kids, whatever they're doing. I think the space was kind of nice for him, but I think they can work around that. So, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see any. I don't see any citizens or visitors other than media. So they still won't go to you.
Good morning. Good morning. Motion to approve the minutes of the July twentieth, twenty twenty one board proceeding. As written by Otter Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Hi. Hi. Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept place on file, the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July fourteenth, twenty twenty one meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. I'd just like to comment on the, on the the amount of funding that's coming. Yes, yes. Incredible. Fiscal year nineteen, pay benefits paid veterans nine million seven hundred and twenty five thousand. Physical year twenty, VA benefits paid to veterans was eleven, eleven million, three hundred and thirty two dollars. An increase of one million, six hundred and seven thousand in one year. So that's wonderful. Those. So the motion and except, second to accept the Citizens Affairs minutes. All those in favor? Hi. Hi. Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
But you're short and sweet.
We're in the summer.
Keep it up.
That's right. We're in the summer sizzle here.
Must be the, must be the fairs coming.
Yeah.
Okay, next up is Luang Goki, our Administrative Assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I might take less than Lisa, I'm not sure. Not much. Calendar for this week, six o'clock tonight as the kickoff for the Jackson County Fair with the fair parade.
I will tell you, Sat, Sunday was their breakfast. I, Marilyn and I went down after eight o'clock fast. We walked in the entryway and that's where we stood in line. They had lots and lots of people. And I think part of it was, it was the hundredth anniversary for the Miles Four H Club. And they had people from all over the country that came back for that. And it was, it was, it was wonderful. And then of course, that morning, they also had their queen candidate Saul introduced in the farm family. And Judy Tandrum as the grand marshal, she gave some, gave a talk, but they, they had an incredible crowd. Everybody that was there kept saying, I've never seen this many people. But they, they really did have a good crowd and the kids all did a great job serving and cleaning up. That was a, a good breakfast.
Didn't run out of food?
Huh?
They didn't run out of food?
Well, I don't know. We were there early. It went till noon. So I don't know if they ran out of food after we were there, but they certainly ended planning while we were. But it was, it was a very, very nice event.
Okay, tomorrow, Wednesday, twenty twenty eighth at nine AM is an iris meeting for Larry. And they changed that to a Zoom only, no in person. At ten o'clock is a department head meeting for Jack. Also at ten o'clock is a webinar on implementing farm stress grabbing go kits. And that one is by Zoom. If any of you are interested in that. At one o'clock is a Jackson County Security Advisory Committee meeting for Mike and myself. Friday, July thirtieth at seven AM is the coconut leadership team. It is also a Zoom only meeting for Larry. And our next regular meeting will be at nine AM on August third. And that is all I have for you today. Check my agenda, bud.
You are short and sweet.
I aim to please.
Okay. Well, that does us, except for our work session. So anything on any of our boards or commissions? We did have, have our Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting last week and I guess the, the main trust, he did give us our, our reports and they did discuss salaries. And they, the committee met and they voted a two and a half percent salary increase for David. And a five percent salary increase for Nick.
Really? Well, that's in some ways, it's an interesting thing.
It was not unanimous.
All right, thank you.
And last night we had the workforce meeting and we put together quite an extensive plan to send for the CARES funds. And one of the things that they talked about in the CARES money that the workforce is going to be getting, nonprofits can apply to them for income that they might have lost during the pandemic. And of course, I was thinking like the historical society, they didn't have any of their functions that they normally have. So they obviously lost income and so did other nonprofits. So there's some potential that they might be able to apply for some of those funds. So anyway, that was an interesting meeting last night. And of course, Sunday was the groundbreaking for the, the solar out at the interpretive center. Thought it was very nice. They, there was, there was a, it was damn hot. But fortunately, they have that overhang in the back of that. So we all stood in the shade until we went out to stick ours. And that ground, that ground was so hard. You could hardly get your spade in it. And some, I just got a little bit and somebody says, is that all you can get? Well, I'm going to just pat it back down when I'm through. But it was a nice event and they talked about solar energy. And the friends of the conservation had raised over forty thousand towards it. And, and they thanked the board because we had allocated some funds to, to assist them to finish that off. And so it was a very nice event.
We had a planning meeting last night at Camp Courageous. And wow, I had no idea that place was what it is.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's amazing.
Yeah. I mean, it started out with a, maybe a ten minute film of stuff they do here and everything. And it was very impressive, I guess. And we did a pool tour, a drive in the tour on the bus. And I avoided a couple of other trucks coming down this narrow road. I, I was telling them, I ended up picking up those mats. I says, those lines are up close together. Well, they are. They're probably eighty, hundred foot bluffs as you're going down there. Yeah, it's a beautiful area. And then we went on a hike. Mike was there and Jane, and they tried to kill us there.
Well, I'm glad I was celebrating my birthdays.
Well, it was pretty educational, actually. It was, they got a lot of, I, I mean, it was good discussion. We probably had an hour or better discussion afterwards after the tour. It was really interesting, you know, what, what possibilities may be or could be. A lot of good ideas and there are a lot of work to do yet though, but it's interesting.
They run ten thousand kids through there in a year.
Hmm. Oh, my.
Yeah.
It's like. And it's amazing.
It's all donation.
It's amazing the things that they have for the kids to do. Yeah. It's just phenomenal.
You want to go to a good breakfast?
Oh, yeah. I've been there for omelette. Yeah. Yeah. You don't get any fruitcakes anymore now that
Oh, Muriel.
Muriel's not here to sell fruitcakes. And she sold a lot of them. Oh, my goodness sakes. And you couldn't tell her no.
No.
So anyway, it's a great facility to have in our area.
Last week, I guess we talked about the care facility. They were worrying about some of the things that weren't completed. And I had spoken, I sent Matt to the mail. I wonder if he could at some point come up with a, with a list of wants or maybe needs. And, and I forwarded it on to everybody. I hope you all got it. I don't think it's anything to be concerned, overly concerned about. He's looking in the future and down the road, three or four years. So basically it's kind of five year, five year plan or something, you know, but there's some things we need to take care of. I know the trees need to come down and we need to address the septic system and the, and that, and get that level off and finished. But our maintenance gentleman's on vacation this week. Yeah, P and so. Anyway, it was, it was a list and some of it opens your eyes. I think maybe the, what's coming up, it's an aging, aging facility. So of course we're going to have some maintenance, but it's normal stuff, I think, but nothing to be alarmed about, I would say.
Maintenance that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah. What they've done is we were out there a couple of months or so ago. They put new ceilings in and, you know, painted the carpet and stuff and it really makes it look nice.
And we talked about that just so that we were on the same page. I mean, we agreed when we were out there. Of course, they were going to start with the one office where there were holes in the nullium or the flooring. And, and yeah, that's just a time factor for them too. They're under staff, just like everybody else. And they were under the assumption that we agreed that they do a couple of rooms at a time per year or something. So I said, yeah, we're absolutely on the same page. So we're not good. He's been real good to work with. So.
Well, I think one of the things I get asked a lot is where, where we're at with the jail and if John's been around or if we've heard anything from him. And I think it would be maybe just good to have Brent come over and give us an update as to how things are going from his, his standpoint. And if we need to have John zoom in, I think we should because the public is, is asking questions.
I think so. A few people asked you when it's going out for bed and you're going to start. And basically I'm telling them we're ordering stuff that needs, you know, a lead time to get things set up. And that kind of will dictate when we can start too.
I do hear some good things about material costs. So seeing that they'll seem to settle down. Down low, well, they go up three, three hundred percent, come down fifty. That's quite not where they were, but you know. They are making a, a attempt to come down some. So.
Well, I know our son that works in that, he said that their lumber is coming down. He works at Lowe's with the contractors and he said their lumber has come, come down. And of course, he's in Florida. That's, that's a little bit different. But he says they're seeing a decrease in the overall cost from the manufacturers. That's always good. We have the South Main Street project. I think we just need to have David check with them about that bridge and see what's up and.
Yeah, I, I don't know if Mallory is on top of that or if that's on her list or, yeah. I know they did some pouring out here.
And I guess, you know, that's another thing I'm concerned about. We had at least a verbal agreement with the former county or the city manager that there would be a handicap cutout out here. And they say we're not going to get it.
It's something.
Yeah. We're talking about on the north side.
Okay. Were they back in and load up?
So I did talk to Frank Ellens and the foreman of the job, Dan. I noticed that last Tuesday was when I dealt with that and they told me that, so sorry, it was never in the plans. So I went back to the meeting when the engineer from So I went back to the meeting when the engineer from, or the designer, whoever it was, Mr. Harbaugh from Bolton and Bank. And city manager then Gerald Smith, where we had an agreement that we would get a curb cut. And it's not there.
And you have that on tape?
Oh yeah, and in the minutes.
Interesting.
Yeah, and Dan showed me the plans that never showed that cut in the plans.
So the case where the DOT were never notified from. From administration here, I would guess is what happened.
It was their engineer was here.
The architect from Bolton.
That was the same time that we talked about these, um, what I call these bump out around the corners. Are they more aggressive than the ones downtown? They appear twice as.
They look huge.
They look huge.
And the curb height, this seems. That's higher than eight inches, isn't it?
Is this, is this the handicap parking spot that's behind the? Or I would say north of the ramp? Is that the handicap spot?
This is the handicap.
I don't know how anybody's going to back in. They're almost going to have to back into that spot. And then try to get somebody if they are wheelchair accessible up that ramp. The handicap is going to almost have to be up here. I, you can't come around that corner and park in that spot.
It, it looks a little odd to me, but I didn't want to pass judgment. Here's what I'm going to tell you is at the time that I was talking to the. Dan, who I was talking to out here on the street project, until you have to work with someone that's in a wheelchair. You don't understand how difficult these handicap spots are. Um, when I was downtown and trying to get someone out of a car that goes into a wheelchair. The curb is this high. So Dan says to me, we'll just park closer to the curb. I said, you try and get someone out of the car. With no, where they don't step down to stand up. I said, why don't we make all handicap parking spots? We paint them all blue. And we make no curb cut. They're, they're level. He goes, that's really a great idea. I said, you need to start working with people that are in wheelchairs. It would make a significant difference in your life if you could experience that.
Well, you'd think with the ADA, they'd have to.
I'm telling you, it's very difficult to take someone in a wheelchair in downtown McCokeria to get them out of the car and into a wheelchair.
I can see if it was level, there might be a drainage issue somewhere along the line, but that I would think they could address into the, into the.
We could engineer that a little bit better.
Bump outs that they have around these corners. I thought they were the most ridiculous thing that they did begin with and now they're still there and, and.
And, and like you indicated, and when I looked at it too, I thought, that sucker is so big. I mean.
How far they're in the street than the ones that are on.
It almost looks like you park as someone there.
I know, it's going to get interesting. I believe that there could be possibly some bricks in. The sidewalk is supposed to be eight feet wide, is what I was told. And then there's going to be like two feet of bricks, very similar to downtown. I think that's going to be an issue with. With snow removal.
Oh, you bet you will be.
How's it been going on Main Street? I mean, they've been doing it.
Well, when we still had the shop, that brick way that walked was from the Mexican restaurant over to Make a Splash. Those are bricks were getting knocked out all the time.
Well, somebody's going to have to be very careful or I, I don't know. I guess this is a wait and see.
And if I remember right back to that meeting, them bump outs were just decorative. There was no real reason for them, is that right?
That would be my recollection.
Maybe that's we're going to, going to set Christmas trees or something. Who knows? But is there any, I mean, do we need to go to the city council with copies of the minutes and the tape?
You may, I, I was talking to Lisa a bit about it a little bit and, I mean, you may be able to buy, I would think it'd be no different than all the driveways, but I know. In the last major subdivision that we did in Bellevue, there wasn't any cutouts, but you didn't know what style of home. Or where the home was placed, but they simply come in and cut it out after.
They do that here?
If we get permission, I would guess.
I mean, if we, if we prove to the city council that Gerald had approved that cutout, I would think with our minutes.
I think you're dealing with the DOT that's staying.
I, I believe that to be true.
When we did um, like short line development up here, we got, we put in a request and they gave it to us on the curbs. It's um, it's a drive over curb. So we'll go up and check it out at the end of our gate. It doesn't have that big hump up on it. It just goes up. It goes up the same height, but it rolls up, so you can put a driveway anywhere and just drive in.
These are already poured, right? So they have to be a cutout. Which is not a big.
Basically, they told me that when we have to load the electric equipment, we're supposed to drive on the sidewalk. Well, they weren't quite sure yet. Because obviously we're going to have some, you know, street light pole, a light pole. Some flowers or some.
Going on somewhere on there. I saw that. Years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if it's made for wide sidewalk, is the, the slope out here on the intersections, is that slope down? Is that equal wide?
He told me that that was going to be a difficult to make it match up. With where our sidewalk is at and where the street is at is. That's what, in visiting with Dan, that's what he told me. He said, this is going to be tough to match up.
So they're rebuilding the whole thing? Why can't they make it work? It's not like they're working with an existing, existing rate or whatever, because it changes everything.
And am I correct that you said Marty is on vacation this week?
Yes, Marty was off last Friday and all this week.
So he will not be in at nine fifty. So do we want to just tell David we're ready for him whenever he wants to come over?
We got any, that's a work session with David, right? Is.
Work session and we have a budget work session and then. So. If we don't have any other business, we could adjourn and then go into our work sessions.
I don't have anything else to report.
I don't either.
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn meeting. All those in favor? I, motion carry.